Post meeting order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation filing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The true republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Allen?
Here.
Green?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Ms. Stravich?
Here.
Reindell?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. Approval of the minutes for the City Council meeting of December 17th would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
It's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? May or not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items?
Yes.
Yeah, say it all over again.
I just want to say congratulations to the two reserve officers that successfully completed their MCOs pre-re requirements and will be starting the academy. Orientation is this Wednesday and they start February 4th. So that'd be Jason Zulig and Raymond Trudeau.
Very good. We hope the best for them and appreciate their sacrifices. You said the classes are gonna be...
Not a cakewalk, that's for sure.
Yeah.
But they've got a long commitment to the city and hopefully they'll continue after that and wish them well on their journey to become a sworn police officer, so.
Absolutely. We appreciate their sacrifice.
Thank you.
That's great.
Any other comments, council? Thank you. Okay, we will move on. Adopting an agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? May or not, a motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion? May or not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
What's been made and supported, there's no discussion on consent agenda. Motion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have no public hearing this evening. We move on to items for consideration. We have two this evening. The first one being consideration of presentation from redevelopment-ready communities. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to hear a short presentation from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. Back in January of 2018, the council approved a resolution directing administration to begin the process of becoming engaged in the redevelopment-ready communities program. Part of that process was a self-evaluation and then a review by the MEDC staff on some of our practices and policies, things like that. We've gotten through that part of the process and at the next stage is a requirement of the program that the state come out and make a presentation to the council on the program and the results of the self-evaluation and a review by the MEDC staff. So, they're here to do that tonight. I will mention, you know, as we went through that and did the self-evaluation, pretty much about forty percent of the best practices that they ask are already being done by the city. About forty-two percent of the best practices are in some process of being completed by the city and we haven't even really started the program, so without Troy and I kind of really getting into the nuts and bolts of it, we're kind of already doing or about to complete the process of adopting the best practices on eighty-two percent of the items that the state looks at when they review a community. So, I think we're in good shape to be able to complete the steps to become a redevelopment-ready community in the state. With that, I'll turn it over. Brett Hanlon from MEDC and Dominic Romano are here tonight to make the presentation to the council.
Thank you, John.
Sorry, one more thing. The... In front of you tonight is the... A hard copy of the PowerPoint presentation Brett's gonna go over.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, council. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. I'm Brett Hanlon. I'm a redevelopment-ready communities planner with MEDC. I'm joined here tonight by Dominic Romano, who is the Region 10 Community Assistance Team for the MEDC. And because Richmond is in Region 10, he's your point of contact for a variety of incentives and programs that the MEDC has to offer. So he's a good guy to know. And I know... I know Troy at least knows him already and have a relationship. So, tonight I have about a fifteen to twenty-minute presentation. I'm gonna explain what the RRC program's all about. I'm gonna briefly go over the findings and evaluation that we performed on your development-related practices. And then I'll outline the ways in which you can align with those practices to become, yeah, in full compliance or in full alignment and then you'd become certified as a redevelopment-ready community. And I'll explain what all that means here, right now. So, the MEDC is made up of three divisions. A lot of you are probably familiar with the... What we call marketing and communications. But it's... You probably know it as the Pure Michigan Campaign. And they deal with the tourism and marketing. Michigan is a great place to be and to visit. Business development. That focuses on your large-scale corporate attraction, business retention and expansion, more of the typical economic development you think of on a larger scale. And community development is where the CAT team and RRC program fall. And we focus on helping communities build great places through having plans in place, zoning codes that enable great places to happen. And we really focus on the programs that add to the quality of life and the vibrancy of a city. Because we understand that it's that type of place in conjunction with the business attraction that's gonna create holistic economic development. So, to do that, in a nutshell, is we help communities identify ways that they can improve their plans, update their policies, streamline their processes, so that they're in the best possible position to attract business and talent. So this slide's really showing redevelopment-ready communities can be looked at as the foundation of strong planning, zoning and economic development foundation for you guys here in Richmond. So this is what we at the MEDC call the business talent place connection. And you'll see up in the navy blue, talent wants place. And if you go clockwise, you'll see place needs business, business needs talent. And it's commonly accepted that communities will work hard to attract the businesses and then the talented workers will then come to the city to work. But it's sort of a... We wanna take a broader view now and it's changing also. Nowadays, more so than ever, people are able to either telecommute, work from home, start their own businesses. And they're choosing where they wanna live sometimes before they're finding a job. And so by addressing the high quality of life in a community, we're able to address that, that new way of thinking. The RRC has eight guiding principles. I'm only gonna hit on a few of them. I wanna talk... I wanna mention it's a self-help program. So, we're not gonna be able to complete a lot of these tasks for you, but we are gonna be able to work with you and provide you all the resources and ideas and documents that are really gonna help you guys get to where you wanna go. I like to lump three of them together to emphasize my next point. Efficient, transparent and predictability. Those all go together in my mind. When your... When your policies are real clear, someone's able to take a look at your zoning regulations or as we've recommended, you create a flow chart for each development review process. And they know who they need to talk to. They can meet with somebody for a pre-application meeting. They're... Basically, they're more confident that their investment's gonna receive the support that it needs to be successful. And that's what developers are looking for a lot of the time, is a predictable process. They just wanna know what they wanna... They wanna have clear direction and customer service. And so that's really something that we encourage communities to do. And then proactivity is the final one. You'll notice a theme throughout as I hit on some of the best practices. We're really implementation-focused. So a lot of times we're asking communities to identify specific implementation actions and then match that with a responsible party. And then even further match that with a timeline so that people are able to easily see what the priorities are. And then there's a sense of accountability that's added by identifying who's gonna head up each project. So this flow chart is pretty confusing. I like to joke that it's kind of my job in a nutshell. You guys really are already at the bottom of the second column and says something about me being here to report the findings. And from here, if everyone's on board and I don't scare you guys off, we'll ask that you pass a second resolution of your continued intent to work towards certification. And from there, you can work at your own pace based on your staff time and resources to complete each task. And then when you are in full alignment, you become certified as an RRC community. Right now, we're working with over two-hundred-and-fifty communities of all different sizes all across the state. Thirty-one have met all of the RRC criteria and have earned certification. And then, gosh, I don't have my glasses on. It looks like a hundred-and-thirty-six have received their evaluations and are currently... Where you guys are, you guys are, I guess, at the very beginning of the red, the diamond. And then eighty-three communities are still in the pipeline awaiting their formal baseline report. So, the best practices are classified into these six categories. We take number one, you could call long-range plans. Takes a look at your master plan. Downtown plan, capital improvements plan and then public participation strategy. And you guys did very well there because you have a great master plan and I was really impressed to see you guys had a capital improvements plan as well. Which is, it's relatively rare to see communities that have six years of their capital expenditures budgeted. Number two is the zoning regulations. We take a look basically to see that you have the development site plan review process outlined. We take a look and make sure that you have the policies in place that are gonna allow your master plan to be implemented. And so we go through a list of expectations and criteria for the zoning regulations and I'll get into some more depth in a moment. Development review process, we wanna make sure that, well, that prospective applicants can meet with staff early on. You guys even have a conceptual review process where an applicant can go in front of, I believe it's the Planning Commission, to get some feedback from them directly, which is very nice. And then we just wanna make sure that it's easy to understand and that it's not going through multiple public hearings when it really doesn't need to in certain cases. And so we wanna make sure that you've been deliberate in that regard. The recruitment and education is pertaining to staff and officials. It's kind of like an ongoing education or professional development-type program and it's... We really just ask that you are proactive in setting goals for staff and officials and then identifying trainings and then working towards goals. Number five, redevelopment-ready sites. We ask that communities proactively identify sites in the community that would have a catalyzing effect in terms of development. And then if there are obstacles or it could be potentially a rezoning or getting people all on the same page in terms of community engagement, we ask that you be proactive in getting those sites ready to go. So if a developer did come and ask you questions regarding sites, you would have some clear answers for them. And community prosperity really is two... It's a two-parter. It's economic development and marketing. So, the evaluation snapshot is showing Richmond is currently meeting forty of forty percent of the RRC best practice criteria. And that's in green. And then forty-two percent, you guys have a lot of the different elements in place and there's, I guess, just a little bit more work that you guys can do to put you into the green category. The red, really, all, well, all except one of those are fives, which are the priority redevelopment sites. And I wouldn't look at that as a negative at all. It's really something that we are pretty particular about, but it's not necessarily a best practice. It's known far and wide. But we ask that you proactively identify those sites and then market them in some way that you see fit. But overall, you guys should be very proud of this. It's a very good scorecard and it's a testament to your involved citizenry, productive staff and the support that they receive from the Planning Commission and City Council. So you guys really should be commended on a great job.
Good to hear.
So, I wanted to hit on a green, a yellow and a red now. The green, I wanted to highlight some of the the great elements of your zoning code. We always look, it's a best practice to allow housing typically downtown. We look for mixed-use buildings. And you guys do that in the B1 and B2 zoning districts by allowing accessory dwelling units, which is sort of an atypical way to see it, but it works. You allow for a diverse housing stock. You allow accessory dwelling units, which is awesome. The build-to line downtown is a best practice because it ensures a uniform street wall. It's... That's gonna support your non-motorized transportation, historic preservation, building a sense of place. So that's a best practice that you guys are currently administering. And then the flexible parking standards were real good. You allow for parking reductions when there's a shared parking agreement in place. If they're complimentary uses, I believe. You allow for parking deferments, which is another way to provide flexibility. And then the... I might be saying this wrong, but the special parking overlay districts. When there's the opportunity to use some public parking or on-street parking, that's a zoning district that then would trigger potentially a reduction in parking. The development review process, so the checkmarks to the top are the ways in which you're already in alignment with it. And then those boxes below are the recommendations. You do offer pre-application meetings and it's explicitly stated in your zoning code, which is awesome. But the recommendation is to just market that online because I'm a little, I guess, biased because I've been a planner, but if I was a developer, gosh, that would be the most important thing, I think, to be able to identify things upfront before you start investing a lot of money. The Planning Commission has site plan approval authority for the permitted uses and the special uses, which is... The best practice calls for Planning Commission approval authority of the permitted uses, but gosh, that's... You guys are even above and beyond that in terms of letting your Planning Commission making some determinations. As long as it meets the letter of the law, it can be approved by the Planning Commission, which is a best practice. And then, so as I mentioned, the pre-application, really, it's a service that you could look at as a service being provided to customers and so we wanna see that advertised accordingly. The flow charts for the development review processes, again, that's sort of a customer service-type thing. Just, a lot of people get intimidated by zoning codes. It's nice to see the steps illustrated in the term... In the form of a flow chart. And then the third recommendation is on your development review process, just having kind of like a comment card, a way that you can get feedback. So if somebody goes through the process and something didn't work well for them, there should be a line of communication open so that they can express that. And so that's what that recommendation is. And as I've already sort of discussed, the opportunities for improvement, these are all of those number fives that were read. It's just asking... It's asking Richmond to identify sites and then for two of them, two or three, identify just basic information about who owns the property. What is it zoned? What do you wanna see there? Are there utility hookups? Is it a vacant site? Just sort of the basic details of the site. And for one, we ask that you take it a step further. And any technical information that you have, we're not asking that you go out and complete any studies, but for instance, your capital improvements plan, just sort of provide some tech... Some technical information that could be used to support that site. So if there's capital improvements plan for an area, if there's fiber optic cable, whatever it might be, to sort of bolster that third site. And as I've already sort of mentioned, moving forward, we will ask that you pass a second resolution of intent to proceed and then I will be in touch with Troy at least every three months with a quarterly progress report and just seeing how I can help and how... Yeah, we'll be working together. I don't think it's gonna be quite as rigid as a three-month thing, but yeah, we'll be working together. And then from there, as soon as you're in full alignment, you will become certified. So now I wanna talk about some of the value in participating in the program. I like to start in pointing out the inherent value of having an objective third-party take a look at all your documents and sort of summarize all of it in that report that you guys have. It actually, I did my best to sort of provide estimated timelines. You could use those or just, you know, change those as you see fit, but you really have the basics of a of a work plan going forward. And so there's benefit in that. There's, gosh, we have a lot of resources on our website and I'm gonna make sure that you guys have access to all of those. Three months from tonight, you'll become eligible for matching grant funds, which is a dollar-for-dollar match, up to twenty thousand dollars for any project that'll get you guys closer to certification. So anything that is yellow or red will match you dollar-for-dollar. And what we end up doing is hiring a consultant to do the work. Dominic and I won't be doing it, but we will provide the money, half of the money, to have a consultant work with you guys. Upon certification, there's a whole new level of incentives. Right now, we're doing a pre-development services program where we're offering twenty-five thousand dollars to communities for publicly-owned, soft costs associated with publicly-owned sites. We also have a redevelopment services team that's working with certified communities to help them draft RFPs and RFQs for sites with design work that then would go along with that RFP. And we're constantly looking for different ways that we can help our communities. So that, it's a new team that's working exclusively with the certified communities right now. And yeah, I guess I wanna highlight just the ongoing partnership. You guys are eligible for community development assistance from Dominic because you're engaged in the program. You have a traditional downtown, or Troy told me two or three. But anyway, you do. And so you're eligible for community development funding consideration right now. So you guys are in a real good spot. And yeah, looking forward to working with you guys. A lot of the things that I talked about in terms of resources can be found at myplace.org. And so I'd recommend checking it out. You can learn more about RRC and the Community Assistance Team. And that's my contact information. I am happy to answer any questions you guys have tonight, of course, but please feel free to reach out, give me a call or an email and be happy to work with you guys.
Any questions at this time, council?
To be certified, we gotta pretty much be all green here. Is that what it is?
Yeah.
To complete the process?
Yep.
We appreciate your assistance. I'm sure Troy will be utilizing the state and we appreciate you guys doing all this work.
Yeah, absolutely.
Glad to see where we're at and I was a little concerned about all the red down there, but once you've explained it, I completely understand. It's not that we haven't identified them. We haven't formally identified the three sites. We definitely have three sites.
Sure.
At least two good ones that we've tried to market and tried to help the property owners.
Okay.
Into the tune of a lot of money to try to help
Yeah.
market the thirty-two acres for industrial use and it just hasn't taken off. It's... We got our first one going now. So we have identified, we just haven't, I guess, formally identified those things and we, I'm sure, can use their help to spread the word that, you know, we're looking for people to come here.
Yeah, exactly.
So, appreciate all your help.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else, council?
I just had a question. As mentioned a couple times, the passing the second resolution. How soon should we be doing that? Or is there certain steps we need to do before we do that?
So I can email Troy an example. I think it says thirty days.
Thirty days, okay.
Yeah, and pretty much, your motion tonight is to direct us to get that on your agenda. And so I think we put in there that we'd probably have it on your February 4th meeting agenda, 'cause next meeting was the roundtable and stuff, so.
And also, CUBG is next.
So February 4th meets the thirty days and so, you know, if council's comfortable with this report and directed administration move forward, we are to have it here in your motion.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to direct city staff to prepare a resolution to proceed in the RRC program within thirty days of this presentation.
Support.
What's been made and supported. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor, that I just really appreciate that this is not just like a certificate, like a gold star, that it's just the process that you go through that we're gonna review and develop and it's just gonna really make us a stronger community. And it, this self-evaluation process just gave us an opportunity that like, hey, we're doing great in some areas and there's some that we are doing there and we just need to take one more step to get forward and I appreciate it. And it it also is gonna give some of our boards who, you know, have been meeting for a while, but especially the EDC, even a bigger vision to work on. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Okay, anything else? Any comments from the public? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Okay, item number two is consideration of in-car camera purchase. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider the purchase of two mobile cam-in-car video cameras for the Police Department. The fiscal year 2018-19 Police Department budget included funds for the purchase of these two cameras. I think at the time we did the budget, the estimate was for nine thousand. I think the total cost came in at nine thousand ninety-seven dollars. We have funds in that line item to cover the ninety-seven dollars in the equipment acquisition line item that we budgeted in the Police Department, so we won't need any funds from fund balance or anything like that. We have six vehicles that we use for the Police Department. Four have existing cameras and we also have kind of the software and hardware in the department to download those cameras when they pull up behind the Police Department. So we're asking that council do a purchasing ordinance waiver so that we can kind of keep with the same camera system and don't have to purchase any additional computers or software. And the chief is here tonight if you have any questions, but with that, we're... I recommend an approval of the purchase of two cameras. Thank you. Chief, do you have anything to add at this time?
The current cameras that we have are... We got those in 2005, so they're the L3, Model 3 is about at the extent of its expectancy. They're not making parts anymore, so by purchasing these new upgraded versions, if you will, we'll be able to keep on or hang on to those older versions and use those for parts that they may not have that we will have. So it kind of helps perpetuate it. Then we can put those into the cars that don't have cameras. So all six will be equally equipped, which has been a goal since, you know... So no matter what car you grab, all the equipment is the same. Preliminary, the first couple of cars didn't have anything, you know, guns, rifles, computers, that kind of thing. So now they'll all be equipped. So no matter what car you grab, they'll all be equally equipped and you can go out and do whatever business, you know, you need to do.
Very good. Any questions to the chief while we got him? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion to waive purchasing ordinance requirements under section 64-53D. Authorize the city manager to sign the purchase agreement with L3 Mobile Vision Inc. for two flashback HD in-car cameras in the amount of nine thousand ninety-seven dollars.
Support. What's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? What's the item? We talked quite a bit about it in a workshop setting. Any other public comments on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by... I'm sorry, I get that every single time. Roll call, please.
Green?
Yes.
LaFleur?
Yes.
Ms. Stravich?
Yes.
Reindell?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for the new year. I'm gonna have to have one of those things that pop up, you know? Roll call, because again, I have it... Thank you for the new year, I'm gonna have to have one of those things that pop up, you know. Roll call, because again, I have it completely circled and lines all around it, like, don't forget to call for roll call on there. Anyhow, motion does pass. Thank you, chief. Moving on to city manager's comments, sir.
Our winter capital approval project, the abandonment of the lift station be, be next to the middle school, and the installation of a sewer line from Richwood Lane is progressing very well. They've made a, a headway on, on getting the line up to the school property. Then they jumped back and kind of connected that line back into the lift station at Richwood Lane, and be moving forward shortly into the school property itself. So that, that's going along well. And then just a reminder, we'll be doing Christmas decorations this Sunday.
Very good. Thank you. Council comments. Dennis?
Nothing tonight.
Jamie?
Happy birthday, John.
Thank you. Emily?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
John?
Nothing tonight.
Rob?
Nope.
Michael?
Nothing, thank you.
Wow. Okay, it's a new year, right? Well, we hope everybody had a Merry Christmas. It's our first meeting in the new year, and we hope that everybody has a very happy new year and a healthy new year, and wish for the best for our community this year. Going to the calendar, we have a rec board meeting tomorrow night. It's rescheduled from the second of January, tomorrow night, right here at City Hall at seven o'clock. Tomorrow night being the eighth of January. On the tenth of January, the Richmond Lennox EMS and their American Red Cross will be having a blood drive, which will be held at Richmond Township Offices, which is on the corner of M-19 and School Section. It runs from nine AM to seven PM on the tenth. And Jeff White has really pushed this. Evidently, there's a big shortage of blood. And if, if you can, if you're able, January tenth from nine AM to seven PM, you can give a pint at Richmond Township Offices. That takes us around, as the city manager mentioned, the volunteers will be out on the thirteenth at eight AM to take down the Christmas decorations. And the library will be meeting, library board will be meeting on the fourteenth at seven o'clock at the library. And the EDC will be meeting on the seventeenth at seven o'clock. And two weeks from tonight will be the next regular city council meeting. I think we had a, yeah, on the eighth, the Cable Commission will not be meeting on the eighth. That's tomorrow night. That's been canceled. Is there any other items that we need to talk about on the calendar?
The only, the only thing is on the twenty-first, our next meeting at six o'clock, we're meeting for the quarterly workshop ahead of time.
Right, right. That's done on here.
And then carry over after the meeting, if we need to.
Yeah. The quarterly workshop, of course, is open to the public, held here at City Hall. As Mayor Protem said, we will start at six. We, if need be, we will stop at seven to have our regular city council meeting, and if need be, we will then go after our regular meeting back into the workshop setting, again, open to the public. And I think that covers it. We'll move on. Any other business of the city council this evening? Being that a motion to adjourn would be in order?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
What's been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us.